All right, I'd like to call this meeting to an order. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSAs, Section 403-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board's June 4th, 2025 meeting. This meeting will come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you are unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go through, to and through the chair, who will then decide at which point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, the chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with a previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen the public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal law. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shoreland, or zoning ordinances and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merit of each project, it will vote on written findings of facts. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that these, those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing at the city's website and in the Planning Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have a right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. All right, on to hearings and business. Old business file, 2025, Tac 09, Tac J30, Tac 47, Tac PS, Sanford Housing Authority Heritage Crossing. This item will remain on the table. And item number two, request for reconsideration, file 2025, Tac 03, Tac I38, Tac 2, Tac PW, Black Avenue and Camp Street, private way. Jamie, can you orient us on this?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Right after the last planning board meeting, two different abutters came to the office and expressed interest in a reconsideration request at the planning board. At that point in time, I took the verbal from both of them and put it on the agenda for tonight's meeting. They did provide written explanation tonight as they came to the meeting as to the basis of the request, and I'll read that now. "We are questioning the board's ability to make a decision concerning a paper street owned by another party. The board's ability to change a paper street into a private road controlled by only one abutter." So that is the basis of the reconsideration request from the abutters. It's been at least two decades since this board has received a reconsideration request. So I reached out to the city attorney today for clarification on how to proceed with a reconsideration request, and it's a two-part question. The first item is the board has to vote to even hear the reconsideration, meaning you guys do not have to hear the reconsideration. It has to be a positive motion of a quorum to say, yes, we're going to hear the reconsideration. With that said, we have two members that were here at last week's planning board meeting, Tom and Lenny, that were part of the quorum vote at that meeting, that are not present tonight. So that leaves the people that were present at that meeting to be Kyle, Jace, and Jack. We need at least four people to make a motion. That said, there is one other option that I have to disclose, and that is if either Margie or Tom will certify on paper that you watched the entire meeting from the previous planning board meeting and read the entire backup for that meeting, then you guys could possibly be voting members tonight. So I guess my first question is, Margie, did you watch and read all of the backup from last week's meeting?
I cannot guarantee that I read all the backup, so absolutely not.
Okay, Tom. Okay. Then unfortunately, we do not have a quorum for tonight, so this motion cannot move forward. Just for clarification to the abutters, what that means is you have to go directly to Superior Court. There has been a little bit of miscommunication on my behalf about the timing of that, so I'm going to clarify that. The ordinance says that we have 30 days, that you have 30 days from last planning board meeting to do that appeal at Superior Court. I mentioned 30 days, and I mentioned 45 days in different conversations. The 45 days is state statute. Our ordinance is 30 days. I confirmed with Phil, our city attorney, that the 30 days in our ordinance will stand against state statute. So you have 30 days from the last planning board meeting to file your appeal at Superior Court.
You have filed a claim for a reconsideration, however, you haven't had us hold the process. Can we get that?
I will email that to you tomorrow. I'm sorry? Yes.
Okay, with that, moving on to item three, new business file, 2025-19-L36-26-DB, Morris Street, Gendro Density Bonus. Jamie, could you orient us on this?
Yes, so this is a density bonus request. This is also something that doesn't happen very often and is typically affiliated with a subdivision request at the same time. So I think this is also the first time we do in just a density bonus without being attached in two decades. That said, the ordinance for the RD zone does allow minimum lot size to be reduced down to as small as 6,000 square feet. They are not asking for that. They are asking for 7,098 square foot lots. This went through site plan two weeks ago. We have a clean recommendation for essentially just the standard conditions of approval coming from site plan.
Awesome. Is the applicant here to speak on this? Awesome. If you wouldn't mind.
Yes.
I am Joe Stanley with Lime Pro Land Surveying. I am here representing the Gendro family for this small project on Morris Street. The abbreviated version of what's going... The abbreviated version of what we're looking to do here is request the planning board allow us to use a density bonus in the residential development zone here. The property is a fairly flat, open lot. You know, and the long story short is, my client has a deed for enough land to be able to divide the lot without even coming to see the planning board, but we discovered during the boundary survey that in 1950, the road was widened five feet onto the client's property, which, if we subtract that five-foot strip, puts us just under the 15,000 square feet. We would need to divide the property without applying for this density bonus. So after that five-foot strip of land is subtracted from the land area, we would need the board to allow us to go down to about 7,100 square feet on the lot size versus the current standard of 7,500 square feet. We have reviewed the site distances for the property and all the other technical aspects that the Site Plan Review Committee wanted to see. No issues arose during that part of the process. What the client would ultimately like to do is build two homes on the property, about 24 by 40, with driveways situated on the right-hand side of each, as is depicted on the plan. You know, otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions. Other than the history of the neighborhood, it was originally laid out in 1926 as 5,000 square foot lots. Some of the current owners in the neighborhood still have lots at that reduced size, and then some of them have been combined or re-divided over the years. And again, in this proposal, we're looking to do about 7,100 square foot lots.
Awesome. We will hold the public meeting, public hearing, and then if there's any questions, we'll call you back up.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this project? Anyone on Zoom? Is there anyone here to speak? Are you for or opposed?
Opposed.
Just one second. Is there anyone here who would like to speak, speak in opposition to this project? Now you can go up.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, if you could just come up to the podium and just state your name and address.
Yes, hi, my name's Bill Miller. I reside at 54 Shula Street, on the opposite side of Morris Street. I went around the neighborhood, and I collected 45 signatures from around the neighborhood on Shula Street and Morris Street, all opposing this construction because it's too dense for such a small area. We don't want it to look overcrowded in such a tiny area. I mean, I'm all for one giant house that would take up almost the same square footage. I think many of the residents in the area are almost the same. They'd all rather see one house, considering the size of the lot. We don't want to see more overcrowding. I've seen a couple places, like beside Jim's Alignment and up there on Kirk Street, where it just looks like shoeboxes. I think that one larger-scale house would be more than sufficient, instead of packing them in like sardines down there. We have, like I said, 45 signatures. Everybody around the neighborhood, except for maybe two or three, did not sign, and that's probably because they weren't home or whatever. But most everybody in the neighborhood opposes this two-home construction. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? And again, if you would like to state your name and address.
Richard Golden, I live on 40 Morris Street, which is two houses down on the opposite side of the property you're talking about. My biggest concern is, pretty much everything he said, I agree, but my biggest concern is, if you look at the homes on that property on both sides of the street, on that street, besides the business up the street, they're all pretty nice houses. They're all pretty expensive houses in today's market, except for maybe one or two on the other end. The thing is, I'm, my concern is, is you're going to take away from my market value of the home if I have two smaller homes up the street, because they go by market analysis when they go by your insurance with your, or if you go to sell your home. So I'm thinking about, did anybody look into that fact, that the market analysis is going to be looking at what the house, what the street looks like and the homes look like? I'm not saying the quality of the homes that the man's going to build are not going to be bad, but close together like that, real close together like that, kind of crowds it. So that's my big concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Could anybody like to copy the signatures and addresses of them? I think they've had a copy of them all.
We have it for the record from site plan.
Awesome. All right, anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak neither in favor nor against, but would you like to ask a general question? All right, declare the public hearing closed, and now up to the board for discussion. What's that? Yes, please.
Okay, great. So density bonuses are covered in the ordinance in the residential development zone, which is 280 11-5 at Section F2B. There's a list of requirements that the planning board is meant to consider when asked to consider a density bonus application. Those are that the overall layout of the streets, lots, and buildings create a neighborhood which has an urban character with a pedestrian orientation. B, the buildings are oriented to the streets in an urban fashion with buildings fronting on the streets. C, parking and service areas are located to the side and rear of the buildings. D, the layout provides for varying lot frontages and side setbacks. E, provisions are made for sidewalks or other pedestrian ways linking the neighborhood. F, the proposed development will be connected to the public water system and operated by the Sanford Water District and Public Sewage System and operated by the Sanford Sewage District. And G, that the proposed development is compatible in building scale and mass with the neighboring buildings fronting on the same street. This includes a setback in orientation of the building to the street, the relative proportion of the height and width of the buildings as seen from the street, and the nature of any proposed parkland or recreational amenities, which still, while still allowing for a variety of building forms and styles within the neighborhood. So I had included in my memo kind of a response to each of those line items, and I can walk you through those as well, although it's available in your packet if you want to follow along. The proposed net residential density is 2, which is less than the allowable 3.4 for this size lot. The, that's 3.4 dwelling units. The proposed lot size is larger than the minimum of 6,000 square feet. The layout of the street is not proposed to change, and infill development improves the neighborhood character. The proposed homes will be oriented to the street, and the required 25-foot front setback and 10-foot side and rear setbacks are shown on the plan. The parking is oriented to the side of the future buildings as required. Neighboring homes include some variation in front setback, but the predominant distance from the right-of-way is the minimum required setback of 25 feet. No sidewalks or pedestrian ways have been proposed, however, no sidewalks exist in the neighborhood currently, and for the infill development of two parcels, staff expects the increase to pedestrian traffic to be negligible and sidewalks to be unnecessary at this time. It's not a full subdivision, it's just a lot split. The proposed parcels will be served by both public water and sewer. And then finally, as it relates to the neighborhood, there are a variety of lot sizes present in the neighborhood. Several lots in the vicinity of the subject lot measure less than the current minimum lot size required of 6,000 square feet, including the parcel immediately across the street from the subject parcel, Lot L3629, which measures to be approximately 4,200 square feet. The neighborhood predominantly consists of single-family homes, except for a multifamily development on the adjacent street, Timber Ridge Ave. As such, the proposed lot sizes and land use are generally aligned with the neighborhood scale.
Thank you. Now open to the board's discussion.
I got to say, when I first read this, I was reading through your notes, Aaron. I was in Minneapolis Monday, and I was reading through the notes, and I first saw, the first thing that came up was a 45-person petition about this project, and I was, said, oh, this is going to be serious. Wow, what are we doing here in Sanford? I was in Minneapolis because I work for a large affordable housing developer in Maine and New Hampshire, and we get plenty of people that really get concerned when we build a building, right? Because they're never, always nervous about what we're going to do. We're bringing people into their neighborhood, new people. But I was there because we were looking for a new type of heating system, cooling system, and domestic hot water system, new of its kind, and it's important to see it. I also happened to have a colleague that nine years ago started working at our company in Portland, Maine, and moved to Minneapolis to be close to family and works remotely still. So it was amazing, was able, she was able to pick me up and my colleague, and we had egg salad sandwiches in her house in Minneapolis. And you know what? She lives in a home property, by the way, Minneapolis, 5,000-square-foot property size, 3 million population, Minneapolis, 3 million in the proper, house by house by house. And we had a lovely lunch, homestyle. Then the next day, we went to the facility. But I'm going to get back to reading this petition, I was concerned. And then I started looking at the map that was created actually in 1929, that's what I saw, very laid out, very clean. And then I scrolled down, I started seeing how the land was really separated over time. And yeah, there was a property that looked like four houses could fit on this land that's being considered split in half. And then I saw your notes where I said, wait, we, we, you, or these two houses weren't actually going against any of our laws, our rules? And I'm thinking, where did we error? I thought we were going to base, where somebody was going to install a factory in the middle of your property, and that would have been a concern. So here's the challenge. The board, groups of people over time, develops guidelines, their guidelines, for the benefit of whole, everyone. And sometimes it's, it's comfortable, and sometimes it's uncomfortable, but it's a guideline. And what I see from your notes, from your applications, sir, is that you've met our guidelines, our town's guidelines. So in good faith, I don't see anything that we've omitted or in error. So I'm, I haven't seen anything, unless we're missing something, can you tell me right now? Or that's applicant, that we need to discuss further, I should be hearing about.
So no, I agree with what you just said. They, they check off all the boxes on the requirements for a density bonus.
Yeah.
I'm just going to clarify, they're actually not guidelines, they're standards. These guidelines are not forcible. These are requirements. So these are, these are standards, not, not guidelines.
Standards.
If they didn't meet these, we couldn't grant the density bonus.
So it's even, yep. Thank you.
Hate to bring it up, sidewalks. My, with this, is there a waiver that we have to vote on, or?
So the sidewalks are generically in the subdivision ordinance, so our biggest discussion point is typically in a subdivision request, because the ordinance specifically says they have to install sidewalks or get a waiver. In this case, it's not a subdivision, even though they are showing a lot split, this is not covered before you as a subdivision. This is simply a density bonus request to have essentially just over 7,000 square-foot lot. So that's, that's not part of the normal subdivision ordinance that would require you to have the discussion on sidewalks.
I do think it's, it's rare that we see a RD development application that is hooked up to water and sewer and is able to be split to meet the density requirement.
There's not a lot of lots left to be able to split like this. This, this is, if you, if you look at the GIS photo and scroll out, this lot, this portion of town has some lots that are slightly larger, some lots that are slightly smaller, some lots that are the same size. This one, this one is a, is a really diverse neighborhood. It's, it's, it's got a little bit of everything in it. We did independently, I drove up the street looking to make sure it meets the character of the neighborhood, and the neighborhood pretty much has everything in it. It has some small houses, it has some big houses, it has some small lots, it has some big lots. So I, I think it meets the intent and the requirements of the RD zone density bonus requirements.
Board, ask one question, actually, it might be presumptive, but with the two houses, will it, they look fairly similar, would be, are there going to be any, they're not, are there going to be any uniqueness to them? So they're not so, they won't stand out as, here are the two houses that you just dropped in the lot.
I would just like to call a point of order on this, that we're not speaking on the actual development of the property. We're speaking on the split.
Got it. Fair enough. We'll save that for another time. All right, that's the other committee.
So to help answer your question, when they apply for the building permits, the codes office then has to make sure that it, what they are proposing meets the character of the neighborhood. So that still will be reviewed, but again, where this is not a subdivision request, it's simply, hey, I want to split my lot, that will be reviewed at a later date.
Anyone else who would like to speak on the board? Do we have any findings of fact?
We sure do. 280-16-7A, utilization of the site, standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity, the standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Group one. Chapter 280, Article 16, Section 7B, access to the site, C, access into the site, D, internal vehicular circulation, and E, pedestrian circulation. The standard is met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Chapter 280, Article 16, Section 7F, stormwater management, G, erosion control, H, water supply, I, sewage disposal, J, utilities, K, natural features, L, groundwater protection, and R, buffering. The standard is met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Group three. Chapter 280, Article 16, Section 7M, exterior lighting, N, solid waste disposal, O, landscaping, P, shoreline relationship, and S, airport encroachment. These standards are not applicable. The applicant is not proposing any development, the standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
And I have a suggested motion. The planning board accepts the information in the May 20, 2025 summer report and June 4, 2025 Site Plan Review Committee recommendation to the planning board, and finds the proposed density bonus request for file number 2025-19-L36-26-DB for the creation of two 7,098 square-foot lots from tax map L3626, has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the Zone Ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. Standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number six, and Standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, preconstruction meeting, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Just one moment. So I, I do want to let the brothers know, it seems like we didn't listen to your concerns. The planning board can only act upon what the ordinance has within it. So where the applicant met all the requirements of the ordinance, we have no basis to deny the project. So we did listen to you, we did, we did take them into consideration, but where all the boxes were checked, there was no ability to say no to them.
It could've been a petition with 10,000 signatures on it, and we still would've had to follow the law. I, I do apologize. Yeah.
All right, moving on to item number four, new business file, 2025, tac 22, tac R22, tac 36, tac MS 259, Sam Allen Road, Country View Subdivision. Jamie, could you orient us on this?
Yes, good evening. This is a, a six-lot subdivision off of Sam Allen Road. The owner, applicant, owns what will become five of these lots. One of these lots have already been an outsale, where it's been within the last five years it is included in the subdivision, but the, the owner only owns lot two through six at this time. This did go through site plan a couple weeks ago, came out of site plan with a few conditions. The applicant has worked diligently over the last couple weeks to try to get that list dwindled down. We still have a few items on it, but we're, we're getting close.
Awesome, thank you. Would the applicant care to speak?
So, my name is Manley Gove, I'm the owner of MC Gove Construction, the owner of this property, and approximately 18, 19 acres there, and...
Get a little closer to the mic, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. 18 and 19 acres there, and would like to get six lots, one that's already been sold. I was told that I could get a lot more than that if I wanted to go, I guess there's a way to shrink the lot size and everything, but weren't interested in that, just want a simple, a simple subdivision. We've looked at everything, and I think we meet everything. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Awesome, thank you. We're gonna open the public hearing, and then afterwards, if there's any questions, we will call you back up.
Would you let me sit here, or would you let me sit back there?
I'd just sit back down, it would be probably the easiest.
Okay.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here or on Zoom who would wish to speak in favor of the project? Is there anyone here who would wish to speak in opposition to this project, whether here or on Zoom? Is there anyone who would wish to state a general comment or ask a question? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Is there any more details for us that came out of site plan?
There's a couple notes on the plan that were, have recently been updated. Essentially, the applicant is planning to drain the site towards the road, so this is a different plan here that you can see on the screen than what we reviewed at site plan. They, the yellow is a wooded buffer along Sam Allen Road, and then the green is a meadow buffer. Those are the requirements for DEP in order to meet the correct amount of stormwater treatment, because our ordinance does require a 40-foot wooded buffer if you're not doing a clustered subdivision. But then they didn't quite have enough there in the 40-foot to treat all of the stormwater, so there's a little extra that's required. That's a no-mow meadow, they're allowed to mow it twice a year. So that will be required to have signs posted, and that's been taken care of. The other comments, so the requirements for the rural residential zone, they've met all of them as far as their layout, they were just cited incorrectly on a previous plan set as far as what the minimums are, and that...
They still wronged it.
I think that.
So they fixed the side, but they left the rear 20 feet, and it's supposed to be...
Okay. One more edit on the minimum rear setback, Manley. And then we're still missing a note that the lots two through six will be served by a residential fire sprinkler system. Do you think these are not done?
I'm mad to confirm.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're done.
Matt confirmed with me that the notes on the plan meet the Sanford and DEP requirements. Of course, DEP is gonna have to weigh in themselves. And we have the proposed tax map and lot numbers are included on this plan set as we require. So just a couple notes on the plan that needs to be updated, but otherwise, they've met the layout requirements.
Awesome. Open up to the board, any discussion on this?
I don't have any major concerns.
Awesome. Yeah, to, to me, like, some of the outstanding things, mainly, not outstanding, but like, some of the things that had to be adjusted were DEP requirements, so I'm good. Do we have any findings of fact?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions, we're ready.
If you, sure, if you'd like to.
So it's my understanding there's a problem with the rear setback?
So again, yeah, proposed lots meet it, but in the top-left corner, both in the chart and in paragraph form, you have it, it says rear of 20 feet, the requirements are 15 feet. So that has to be updated to say 15.
So we had it 15, and I was told to, I think I was told to make it to 20.
So we told you to make this, to fix the side setback, not the rear.
Okay. And what was the other one?
So just, just so you know, the process, Manley, what we're, what we're proposing to do tonight is to approve you with some conditions that give you a month to give us a new plan, does not have to come back to the planning board, those are then reviewed by staff. But those proposed conditions of approval was to update the, the rear to properly say 15 feet.
We can do that.
Add a note to the subdivision plan that states lots two through six will be served by a residential fire suppression system.
Okay, it's not on there? I thought we...
It's not, I, I reviewed everything.
We had it on there, it must've got taken off. It's not, not a problem.
No, none of these are problems, Manley, they're just housekeeping items that need to be corrected. And then, update the submission package with individual plot plans for each of the lots showing proposed tax map and lot numbers, all required setbacks, buffers, and easements to be attached to the deeds. So you provide us a sample of one of the lots, we need all five.
No problem, I can do that.
Yep. So those are the conditions, plus the standard conditions of approval, which is a preconstruction meeting, a performance guarantee, signed recruited, recruited, recorded plat, inspection fiasco, and alterations of the plan. So that's, that happens on every approval, which we'll go over those with you at the preconstruction meeting.
Okey-dokey. So, see if I understand this, so if they decide to approve it, you can approve it, sign it off, I can put it on record, but then within a month, I, no.
So what happens is, you would, after tonight, you'd go back to your consultant, you would make the plan amendments required, you would then give us five copies, rolled copies of that revised plan set, staff would review it, and then would bring it back to the next planning board meeting for planning board signature. We would then call you up and say, Manley, it's ready. You then bring that to the registry of deeds for recording, you then bring us back a recorded copy, and then you schedule the preconstruction meeting.
I see. So I have to wait till the next planning board meeting before I can move forward?
You would anyways.
You would anyways.
Because we wouldn't have the plans assigned.
But yes.
Okey-dokey.
Yep, yep. All right.
We, we can go over all this tomorrow, Manley.
I understand.
We'll help you tomorrow.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, so findings of fact?
275-10-39, conformance with other regulations, the standard is met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in chapter 275 and 280.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7A, utilization of the site, the standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Group one, 275-10-35, traffic conditions, and chapter 280, article 16, section 7B, access to the site, C, access into the site, D, internal vehicular circulation, and E, pedestrian circulation. The standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Chapter 275, article 10, section 31, pollution, 32, sufficient water, 33, impact on existing water supply, 34, soil erosion, 36, sewage disposal, 37, solid waste, 38, impact on aesthetics, open spaces, historic areas, wildlife habitat, and shoreline access, 42, impact on groundwater quality or quantity, 43, floodplain management, 44, identification of freshwater wetlands, 45, stormwater management, 46, recreation in open space areas, 47, phosphorus impacts on great ponds, and, chapter 280, article 16, section 7F, stormwater management, G, erosion control, H, water supply, I, sewage disposal, J, utilities, K, natural features, L, groundwater protection, M, exterior lighting, N, solid waste disposal, O, landscaping, R, buffering, and S, airport encroachment. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Group three, 275-10-41, impact on water quality and shoreline, 275-10-48, spaghetti lots, and 280-16-7P, shoreline relationship. These standards are not applicable, the applicant is not proposing any development, this standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
And finally, group four, 275-10-40, financial and technical capacity, and 280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity. These standards are met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Congratulations.
You have to do a motion still.
Are we gonna do a motion still, sorry? I was all excited with my new job here.
Hold on.
The planning board accepts the information in the May 20, 2025 summer report and June 4, 2025 site plan review committee recommendation to the planning board, grant the requested waivers and finds of application number 2025-22-R22-36 to develop a six-lot residential subdivision, has satisfied the requirements of article 16 of the zoning ordinance and article six of the subdivision ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By July 5, 2025, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide five copies of revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. One, update the rural residential zone dimensional requirements on the subdivision plan to match ordinance requirements, and that is 15 feet minimum rear setback. Two, add a note to the subdivision plan that states lots two through six will be served by a residential fire sprinkler system. And number three, update the submission package with individual plot plans for each of the lots showing proposed tax map and lot numbers, all required setbacks, buffers, and easements to be attached to the individual deeds. And then two, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number four, signed recorded plat, number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, preconstruction meeting, and number nine, alteration of plans.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the motion as read.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Now you can be congratulated.
All right, moving on to number five, file 2025, tac 23, tac R17A, tac 19, tac, I mean MP, 45 Channel Lane Aldrich Shoreland Permit. Jamie, could you orient us on this?
So this is a, a shoreline permit request for a site alteration for water off, for waterfront property off of Channel Lane. It's, it's two lots, side by side, owned by the same owner. One lot is just addressing some revegetation that was required for some hazard tree removals that was done previously, and the major work would be to replace a set of fail-in stairs down to the water and a couple retaining walls that were in dire desperate need of attention. This did go through site plan review two weeks ago, it came out of site plan review with a clean recommendation for approval.
Jamie, is this a public hearing?
Sure.
All right. Yep, if you just state your name and address and...
So I'm, I'm John Aldrich, I live at 45 Channel Lane here in Sanford, and the request is, is to replace essentially some set of stairs and retaining walls to hold back the bank now. You'll see by the pictures, the existing stairs, they, they built them when they built them probably 20, 25 years ago, and they were poured concrete, but they, they put them right next to three big pine trees, and the pine trees have, over time, you know, the root systems have really heaved the, the granite. So as a result, and you can see from the pictures, it is a difference in the rises, and it's become a real safety hazard. You know, we have 10 grandchildren, let alone the five children that we do have, but when they come, it's a real, you know, I hold my breath every time they go up and down the stairs. And that's why I put in a, a second railing for the little kids, and I, and I watch them like a hawk, because it's a real issue. So the, the main proposal is to replace those stairs. I hired a landscape architect to help us develop, you know, a planting scheme for 51 Channel Lane that we own, but also to address this, the issue of the stairs. And he had on the idea to move the stairs over, get them away from the root system at all, completely, from the trees. So the proposal, and I think Aaron's brought up the, the right drawing here, because it shows both lots. So the, you can see kind of in reddish line, that's where the proposed new retaining wall would go. The existing retaining wall by the deck is actually five feet closer to the water, and one of the things we wanted to do was get away from the water, so we're less non-conforming than we are now. And that, that retaining wall is made out of these, I call them landscape tiles, it's essentially wood, and they're rotting out. And our neighbor has the same kind of retaining wall, and it's actually collapsed in several places. So I'm worried that ours is gonna collapse, and all that dirt's gonna flow right into the river, and that's the last thing any of us want. So we, very faintly, at least on this drawing, I can see where the old stairs were, nestled in between the trees. We moved the stairs over and curved them down, there'll be a handrail that goes with it. And then, the new retaining wall by the deck is actually five, four to five feet back farther away from the water. That will actually improve the slope, so it'll be more of a natural slope there. The other two retaining walls by the beach area, there's supposed to be six-shades lounges that are on the beach. It's kind of an exaggeration, because, anyway, but they're exactly where the wall is now. And I think one of the pictures showed the rock, that was retaining walls are made out of rock, and they're not really conducive to retaining walls, and, you know, vegetation's growing in between the rocks, you know, it's a hazard too, and, and I worry about that wall too. The upper retaining wall is, it was a poured wall, it's only like a 12-inch-deep wall, but it will be replaced also with the Rosetta Stone. But it will be replaced also with the Rosetta Stone blocks, essentially the big block, four feet by eighteen inches by twelve, you know, stacked on top of each other to make a really, a really good retaining wall. Be gravel underneath them. So it really is well-engineered and should suffice to, you know, address the issues. And then we're showing a, like a patio area. That's now part of the barking area. It's gravel now. And we're simply paving, you know, putting patio stones down to make a nicer fire pit area, if you will. So. And then over here on the lot fifty-one, that's, as was mentioned, that's the plantings of the trees to replace the trees that were cut down when we built fifty-one.
Awesome.
I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'll, we'll have the public hearing and if there's any questions from the board or the public, call you back up. So I will declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Is there anyone here who would like to ask a question or make a general comment? I will declare the public hearing closed. Is there anything else that came out from site plan review? Nope. Does the board have any discussions?
Good plan.
Well, that's, I will say this is one of the best plans we've seen for an approval like this. Normally, it's a hand-drawn note and it's hard to decipher what is actually going on. So I really appreciate these plans.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment.
I'll make just a generic comment.
A joint effort, so between the landscape architect and the, the folks have helped develop this. So we feel good about proposing it to you folks.
They, they did a wonderful job.
I was going to say, we've been working with the property owner for at least a year at this point. I met on-site with this landscape architect. They wanted to do it once, they wanted to do it right. They, they made the site better than it was, which is the intent of the shoreline zone ordinance. We, we moved the walls back where we could, we revegetated where we could. So this one pretty much is the, the poster child of what shoreline revitalization should be.
Now, do we have to do any findings of facts or just a motion?
Oh, no, we have findings. And they're interesting, too. Are you ready for them? Okay, great. Two seventy dash fifteen dot D, two C. I don't know. Will adequately provide for the disposal of all wastewater. The standard is not applicable. The standard is not applicable because the proposed project has no impact on subsurface wastewater system.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven A, utilization of the site. The standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Two eighty, two eighty dash sixteen dash seven Q, technical and financial capacity. The standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Chapter two eighty, article sixteen, section seven B, access to the site. C, access into the site. D, internal vehicular circulation. And E, pedestrian circulation. The standard is met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Group two, chapter two seventy, article fifteen, section seven D, two A, maintain safe and healthful conditions. B, will not result in water pollution, erosion, or sedimentation to surface waters. D, will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wildlife habitat. E, will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access to inland and coastal waters. H, will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. And I is in conformance with the provisions of chapter two seventy, article thirteen, land use standards. And, chapter two eighty, article sixteen, section seven F, stormwater management. G, erosion control. H, water supply. I, sewage disposal. J, utilities. K, natural features. L, groundwater protection. O, landscaping. P, shoreline relationship. R, buffering. And S, airport encroachment. These standards have all been met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Finally, group three, two seventy dash fifteen dot D, two F, will protect archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan. Two seventy dash fifteen dot D, two G, will not adversely affect existing commercial fishing activities. Two eighty dash sixteen dash seven M, exterior lighting. And two eighty dash sixteen dash seven N, solid waste disposal. These standards are not applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development. The standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
And the suggested motion is the planning board accepts the information in the May twenty, twenty twenty-five summer report and June four, twenty twenty-five site plan review committee recommendation to the planning board. Grant the requested waivers and find minor site plan and shoreline zone application number two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-three dash R seventeen A, dash nineteen dash MP to replace the existing retaining walls and stairwell to the shoreline. Remove and replace the deck attached to the house. Install a patio over a portion of the existing driveway. Re-vegetate required areas and install other site improvements has satisfied the requirements of article sixteen of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. And that would be standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee. Number six, inspection fiasco. Number seven, pre-construction meeting. And number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five-zero.
Congratulations.
I hope you enjoy the safer stairs.
Yes. Thank you very much.
They're going to be beautiful.
We're looking forward to it. Want your pictures?
The planning board, we're waiting for the invitation for your first party.
Sir? You want your pictures?
Photos. Right here.
Oh, yeah. Photos of your stairs.
Before and after.
Yeah.
I'll bring the after ones.
Yeah.
Well, can't, we're not getting invited to the after ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been cutting.
All right. Moving on to other business, planning directors' report.
So first, I'd like to thank Jase for occupying the role as chair tonight with Tom absent. You did a wonderful job. Two, I want to thank Kyle. He has a nice robotic voice for the motion on all of the findings of fact.
I tried to say motion to approve a thousand different ways. I think that, yeah.
He's going to record the opening statement.
Motion to approve.
DJ. Yeah, we can play the opening statement on a recording.
Mm-hmm.
You have a good announcer's voice.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
No one's ever said that to me before.
Some music in the background?
Yeah.
I've been, I've been talking about either making that shorter or getting it recorded. So I think you just volunteered yourself for a role, Kyle.
Except finding the pass.
Yes. And now.
So pretty much status quo. We're still getting applications in. We're still going through the process, not really seeing slowdown in sight. It's exciting driving around. We're seeing some of the projects come to fruition. That's, that's good news. We have developers asking questions daily still. There still is a slight lag between pre-apps and applications. I think really just due to everybody's workload on the consultant side of the world. Everything is going, going well on the development side. So again, want to thank staff, want to thank planning board. City of Sanford is benefiting from everybody's hard work.
Is there a Dollar General going in somewhere?
Not that I'm aware of. You're not the first person to ask me that this week, so not, not that I know of.
It was on Facebook yesterday.
Always Facebook.
Well, if it was on Facebook, it must be.
No, it said it had gone through site plan review on the Facebook post and I was like, I feel like we would have heard about it.
Well, it said it went through the appeals process to get from ten feet to three feet or something.
Maybe it was Sanford, Florida. And they messed it up. Yep.
That's what they were, somebody was, well, that was supposed to be highly free.
All right. So any communications? I would just like to say, you know, because I've been on the board, it's probably been close to a decade. And when I started, the projects were not very complete when they got to us. There was a ton of discussion and a lot of conditions. And so I know for a lot of people, anyone who's watching, we run through the items really quick and that's a huge testament to the plans being complete and there's not a whole lot ambiguous to discuss. And so it's been refreshing.
Right. Thanks for vetting out, vetting the, the projects before we hear. I mean, yes.
So I'm going to give, I'm going to give planning board staff credit for that, but I'm also going to give the applicants credit for that in some cases. Some of these, we have to work very hard to get them here in good shape. Some of these are easy.
Sure.
So the consultants are listening to not only us but other communities. There, there are some very good consultants out there. We, we still have a few challenges to get here, but for the most part, I think everybody's working harder to make the applications easier to, to smooth sales through.
Yep. All right. Anyone want to make a motion?